Those trousers.
I'm just, I'm just looking at three people got the memo of what to wear, but three didn't.
Yeah, the colors.
All right. Oh, we are off to a great start. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, councilors, and welcome to the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of Town Council. And so I'll call this meeting to order and pass it over to the deputy mayor to read the acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor Donovan. We would like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today in Kispukwic, one of the seven districts of McMoggy, homeland of the Mi'kmaq people. We acknowledge the treaties of peace and friendship, and we thank the Mi'kmaq people for their generosity in sharing their homeland with us. We are all treaty people.
Thank you. And before I call on the deputy mayor to move approval of the agenda, we have a couple of changes to that agenda. Point B is removed and it will be, my understanding, at a special meeting after the May Committee of the Hall?
Yes, there'll be staff reports coming on the compost site to the Committee of the Hall, and if action needs to be taken right after that, we'll have a special council.
All right, so it will be at the May Committee of the Hall, and because we're not dealing with that tonight, seven A, which was in camera, will be removed from the agenda as well. So with those changes.
Um, yeah, I would move that the agenda be approved as amended.
And councillor Elliot, seconded, are there any other changes or amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that is approved. And approval of the, excuse me, minutes of Town Council meeting of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, deputy mayor?
I would move that the minutes of Town Council meeting of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three be approved as circulated.
Seconder, please. Councillor Elliot, I will get to councillor Palmetier at the next one. Are there any errors or omissions? In those? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and thank you. And Town Council in-camera meeting of March twenty-first?
Um, I would move that the minutes of the Town Council in-camera meeting of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three be approved as circulated.
Councillor Palmetier, would you like to say? Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, that's passed. And the special joint council in-camera meeting of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
I would move that the minutes of the special joint council in-camera meeting of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three be approved as circulated.
Thank you. On the seconder, please. Councillor Ingham, thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that's passed. Thank you. I have a number of comments. The first one is a sorrowful one, and that is, but this is, it is three years today and tomorrow from the mass casualty event in Nova Scotia. So I see that our, our flags are at half-staff and encourage everyone tomorrow at noon to take a minute or two to reflect on, on what happened three years ago in our province on this day. And we also have a proclamation. I would like to proclaim that May seventeenth, we proclaim as International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia, and we will recognize this day, that day as such. That is our proclamation, and these proclamations go on the website, and I think they're also posted in the front office of Front Hall. And two other items. I had a meeting this week. It's actually about the third meeting that I've had with the Lions Club. Happy to say that the Lions Club has received a full grant for a generator. They will become the town's comfort center. And it's a nice partnership between, or among, yes, there's three of us, the Lions Club and the Town of Wolfville and Dan, and a shout out to James Colacut, one of our staff who apparently has been wonderful according to the executive of the Lions to work with. They're very, they're very appreciative of the help that they've received from James, and also Wolfville Rotary. So it will be an opportunity. We did have a comfort center at the school. Some of you around this table will remember some of the events in the past where we're madly calling councilors, can you come in and help manage these comfort centers? So the Lions, Rotarians, and I offered members of council as well with, who are interested will be on a roster so that when we have an emergency and when Remo opens our local comfort center, we will have lots of volunteers to, to call on. So very excited about that. It's a really nice partnership with our community. And the last thing I'd like to mention, I attended just a lovely event this afternoon. It was the last memory cafe of this season. It was held in Kentville, even though it's the Wolfville Memory Cafe. The theme was staying at home but getting away, and so it meant that people, mostly Wolfville people that attended, that attend the memory cafe, but it was a chance to get out of, out of, a little bit out of town and, and see something different in the petit patisserie is where we held it. They did a love, Gabrielle did a lovely job with some very nice strawberries dipped in their own homemade chocolate, and where they actually make the chocolate, grind the beans and so on. So it was, it was lovely. And it's, we were fortunate to have Beverly, Dr. Beverly Cassidy at Accessibility Committee yesterday. She just does a wonderful job. It's so, it's such a positive experience, and also our staff, Nick Zamora is a great help. So it's a very positive thing, and I thought, I know we talked at Accessibility yesterday about the importance of being an age-friendly community, and we talked about it with respect to parks and so on. So I'm going to put a a comment out to council that as we are going through the rest of the things that we go through in the remainder of our term, that we really think about how we can make this an age-friendly community for, for the young children who have been writing me many letters and us many letters this week about safety on the streets and to older adults and, and our entire community. So, but that was, that was a lovely way to spend my afternoon. Are there any other comments that members of council would like to make before we move on? Thank you. All right, is, are there any members of the community here for public input? And I understand there is no one online. All right. Oh, Carolyn, yes. Yes, absolutely. You're the only actual just member of the community here, so, so I thought maybe you would.
Well, I, um, I know I have to state my name.
Your name, and you have three, four minutes.
And I live on Maple. I actually want to start off by just saying thank you to the council for all the work you do. I, you know, although I still work, you know, I have a lot of respect. I don't think I realized how much work you were doing and what is involved in being a councillor. I mean, there's so much going on in town, a lot of great stuff, and I really appreciate the work you do, but it also makes it quite hard as a citizen to keep up with everything that's going on. But thank you for everything you do. I think I just want to say, I could say lots of things, but I'm just going to say one thing tonight. And it came after watching, and I think it was the meeting of the council of the Hall that I watched online, or Committee of the Hall. And there was mention of an unexpected half a million dollars, if that's the right meeting, of the Sustainable Services Growth Fund that the town received. And I, I simply want to perhaps reference you back to my comments of January the fifth, when I spoke about Maple and the safety of Maple and recognizing that it's in between the major development, and it's a key piece, I think, of the whole development for the east, east end. And, and I was just wondering that this might be an opportunity, if you haven't spent it already, to use those funds to kickstart the work on that street to make it, upgrade it to the level it needs to be with the work that is going to be happening in the east. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't know if we have spent that money. I, I do know that staff have some interim plans for Maple, some calming and so on. The major work will be done when the development is done because there's, there is going to be a lot of wear and tear on the road, so it can't be done while they're also redoing the road. But I, I believe staff are looking at some calming measures in the interim because absolutely understand that. Okay. All right. Motions from Committee of the Hall, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. The first one is the Stage Profits One-Time Operating Grant Request for anybody who's, Carolyn, for watching us in here, or if you're watching us online, these are all items that have been discussed at, at fair length during Committee of the Hall. So there's not often a lot of discussion at, at council meeting. If you're wondering why things go much quicker at council than they do at Committee of the Hall. Would somebody like to put the motion on the floor for Stage Profits? Deputy Mayor?
Um, I would move that council approve the grant request from Stage Profits in the amount of ten thousand dollars for their twenty twenty-three production of Andrew Lloyd Webber's Jesus Christ Superstar.
Thank you. And is there a second or please?
I second that motion.
Councillor McKay, are there any comments from members of council or from staff related to this? Councillor Elliot?
Um, several people have mentioned the fourteen hundred dollar charge for parking. I think it's staff parking. Have we received any explanation of that item? I would think, given the other expenses, that that would be not an issue, but I don't understand.
Mike?
I don't have any information on that. I just looked back to count to see if he's heard anything. No information on that, other than I know that it's tied to Acadia and the Destination Acadia Initiative. So I don't, I don't have that hands out and whether it would influence the.
That's what I thought you'd say.
Yeah, that, that may be something, I, I know, Mike is our acting, Director McLean, excuse me, is our acting CAO the next two weeks. Aaron Bowden, our CAO, completed the marathon, Boston Marathon yesterday with good times, so she is. So that's, that's exciting, and she is taking the rest of the two weeks to recover. No, she's, she's on vacation. But when Aaron gets back, I know that she has been working with Destination Acadia, and she can certainly follow that up. But no, I haven't. I, I did see those comments as well. All right, if there are no other comments, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that is passed. Now, item B, as I mentioned at the beginning, is removed from, from tonight's agenda. It will be on, brought forward to the May Committee of the Hall, which is the first Tuesday, which I believe is May second morning. It will be on that, and if, depending on what happens at Committee of the Hall, there would, we would have a special council meeting to deal with that item immediately after. That brings us to item C, RFD zero fifteen, twenty twenty-three WBDC agreement. And Director McLean, did you, do you have comments on that or?
There's potential small changes, so it's between, I believe, councillor McKay and/or Devon to.
With Shepherd, one of you, councillor McKay, are you?
I'll just quickly say, just in terms of shuffling these agreements around between the parties, there's some small edits that I'm just working on making that came out of the WBDC there. Very minor, and I think councillor McKay will speak to some of those, but they're nonsubstantive, really just shuffling things around in the document. So we'll bring that agreement forward to be signed by the parties, but I just wanted to make sure that was on the record this evening.
Thank you. Councillor McKay, did you want to add any comments?
Yeah, I'll just say that the few changes that, just so you know before you approve it, would be there, there, there was some redundancy in their reporting coming back. It said, this year you will do this, this year you will do that, and it's kind of repeated itself a few times. So this just tidies it up to say you will come back with a financial report subject to a review engagement. You will present with your presidents every, every year. And then every year that there is a new renewal, your strategic plan will come back, a budget will come back, and a list of your initiatives come back. It's just a little cleaner, and then there was one part that was sort of shuffled in there. That's actually something we will do, but it's in their section, so it will just come out and go to there. So it was very minor, just sort of tidied up to say you will do this, we will do that, and just make it a little more succinct. But those are the, the only changes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Elliot?
Um, as the former chair of the Public Art Committee, I have a concern about the place-making item on the strategic plan. I think, I think some cultural planning is required in order to look at these kind of issues on public property. I will not vote for the, for the agreement, but that is something that registers in my mind. Just wanted to state that.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah, councillor and I have spoken about that, and I've spoken with director like too. I think there's some ways we can work together on solving those issues, but certainly we sit down together, so definitely acknowledge that.
I am absolutely sure that we will work well together, so.
All right.
Yes, please. Okay. I would move the council approve entering into a three-year funding agreement with the Wolfville Business Development Corporation as outlined with the amendments as, with the appropriate amendments in this report, RFD zero one five dash twenty twenty-three.
Second, second, deputy mayor, thank you. Are there any other comments, council? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that is passed. The next two items, I think Director McLean will speak to, and I could ask councillor McKay when the motions come. She is the alternate on that. On the, the IMSAs, if she would move those.
I won't, I won't add much because I know this was discussed at Committee of the Hall. Other than that, every year when we set a budget, the council sets their budget in March, there is inevitably some larger items that come after that. Value Wasting Kings Transit or two of those, RCP is another one, although not being dealt with tonight, where the budgeted amount that comes forward is higher than what we had in our approved budget for the town. But that happens every year. There are estimates. Some will be over, some will be under, and these are in the realm of management will start to have a close look at where things are overall, including any that may be savings, and will come back in the future for council. If there's something that we have to deal with, other than that, the budgets are as they are and, and can move forward.
Right.
Is that true?
So councillor McKay, if you would move the KTA budget.
Certainly to do that. Sure. I would move the council approve the King's Transit Authority's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four operating and capital budgets.
Seconder, please. Councillor Elliot, any comments or questions from council? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that's passed. And the Valley Waste Budget.
Uh, I would move that council approve the Valley Waste Resource Management Authority's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four operating and capital budgets.
And the seconder, please. Councillor Palmetier, any questions or comments from council? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that is passed. And that brings us to the Acadia Town MOU, which councillor McKay can also move when we get there. I just wanted to, there's a slight change. It's one of the non, non-substantial changes. The following our meeting on this item with, at Committee of the Hall, the Board of Governors met, and they asked that, although the principles in the MOU were not in any order of, of priority, they have asked that the principle five, which related to territorial recognition and EDI be moved up to the first spot. And we did not see an issue with that, but that's, that's the change that has been made in that, in the MOU. We can talk about that after we get the motion on the floor. Councillor McKay?
Thank you. I would move the council approve the attached MOU between the Town of Wolfville, Acadia University, and Acadia Students Union, and authorize the mayor and CAU, CAO to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Councillor Ingham.
I have to get in here.
I know. You know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we don't put your names in, but we know you're here, but we kind of all blend in. All right, are there any questions of council either about the, the change or the MOU? That's good. All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, that is passed. And we have new business, RFD zero one one, twenty twenty-three Water Rate Study. Director McLean, acting CAO, is going to start us off and introduce our guest.
Just bear with me for a second. So I have with me Jerry Eisner, one of the two consultants that worked on the rate study, and they've worked on pretty probably the vast majority of rate studies for the smaller municipalities outside of the HRM. So they're well-known to the board. We've noted that in the RFD itself. I guess at this stage, councils had a chance to hopefully go through the RFD that was in the agenda package. And if there's any questions coming from that, I'll probably do this and look to Jerry to help fill in the gaps. And we also circulated a document late this afternoon that Jerry provided to us that outlined what the wa, the average, what I would say the average water consumption is for customers throughout the province. And if you had a chance to look at it, I know it came out late, but the Town of Wolfville shows that we are on the, the low side of water rates and by a significant margin if, if you go to the more expensive areas. So that doesn't necessarily make it easier to look at an increase, but after the rate study, there is a desire or a need to apply to the board. So the motion that you'll have in front of you after there's any questions deals with authorizing staff to file the appropriate paperwork. And I'll just throw it over to Jerry if he had any comments, and then maybe we'd open up for any questions that there might be.
I am just, I, I want to congratulate the water utility. You've kept your reach in an excellent place. And also, we go through these, Blaine and I, my partner, I'll go through these fairly seriously and look on all your capital expenditures and where you're putting your money, and, and it appears to us that you're going in the right direction. We, we do see a lot of water utilities. We see the majority in the province, but you are putting money into what, what we would call aging infrastructure. And that's where everyone is heading these days because we're, we're having issues with that. And also I see some funds in there for replacement wells. So all of the right moves for, for a water utility of this size, and you certainly have excellent rates. You know, you're in, in great shape. That sheet I gave you actually standardized to your water consumption. So it is the, every touch, the average consumption in the town right now, or in the Wolfville service area is forty-five cubic meters or nine thousand eight hundred and some odd imperial gallons. But for us in the metric world, it's forty-five, and, and we do as well, we built into the rate study that, that we are seeing a decline in water consumption for five-eighth inch customers, which are primarily single-family residential. I would suggest that, looking at yours, that you've got some mixes in there, probably multiple units or single-family homes that are being used for perhaps housing and things like that, because your consumption is just a bit higher than the average in the province. So we see that, but we do see it declining, and we see that as a universal move across North America right now. This water consumption is, is going down on, on an average basis. So we are finally recognizing that we, we have a finite resource and that we have to value it as such.
Right. And I think councillor Elliot, as Chair of Source Water, you could put the motion on the floor, and then we'll ask if people have questions.
Certain. I would move that council authorize the Town of Wolfville to make application to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board for changes in its rates for water and water service, fire protection to the Town of Wolfville, and changes to its rules and regulations for customers served by the Town of Wolfville Water Utility as set out in the Water Rate Study dated April third, twenty twenty-three, prepared by G.A. Eisner Consulting Limited in association with Blaine S. Rooney Consulting Limited.
Thank you, councillor Elliot. And the seconder, anybody else want to get their name in? Okay, thank you, councillor Ingham. Yeah, you have to be quick off the mark. Are there any questions, council, for members, for staff or our consultant? Director McLean?
Oh.
Sorry, I just got this chart here. I'm sorry. I just got this chart, so you, but I just got a question on it. So Village of New Minus, these dates, the rates are effective since two thousand and nine. They haven't updated. Like, some of these numbers seem old.
Some of them are old. New Minus, I suspect, I have never, I have never worked in New Minus, but I suspect New Minus is living off what we call growth. So they're getting new customers all the time so that they're making up for the fact that their bills are going up by simply adding new customers. So they're selling more water, new water. Therefore, they're getting revenue from a, a new customer base, not from their existing customer. That is rare in Nova Scotia. Okay, we, we don't have many growing communities, but we, we see a lot of, of growth. But New Minus is one.
But even Lawrence Town is two thousand and thirteen, so let's, and Lawrence Town is not growing.
No, some of them, I, I, I won't say Lawrence Town is one of them because I don't know, but some communities defer putting out their water rate studies longer than they should. And we, we just finished one, and I can speak to this one because it's public knowledge now. The Town of Trenton, we finished theirs. They hadn't done a rate study since two thousand and eight. We had to, over the rates were over-doubled in one, okay, they were like a hundred and twenty-five percent increase.
And I would add, we.
Mike here, your mic's ringing.
We went through that same process here just a few years ago where the rates, the previous rate study was, I think, in two thousand and one, carried rates to about two thousand and four, and through the work of, of the same consultants, only four years ago, it's noted in the RFD, we increased our rates. So I think there has been a history in the municipal water utilities, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that sometimes they don't get to them, and then you see the large increases. We made a commitment in response to the board's questions the last time of trying to come back on a recurring basis so as to avoid kind of this static, oh, we need more money, big jump. So that's part of this process.
It goes to a public hearing process. It's not much fun sitting on the stand and having to tell somebody you're going to double the water rate. Okay, so it really isn't. Much easier if you bought five, six, seven percent, something like that, five percent, three percent even. In your case, your percentage is high, but your dollar value is so low. I, the other calculation I do is how many, what's the cost per day and per month? Your case, by the way, your, your increase is going to be fifteen cents a day, so you can't even buy a coffee after a week. So. Thank you.
Councillor Elliot, and then councillor Ingham.
I have a question that's not really pertinent to the water rate itself, but I was thinking back to last summer when we had supply chain issues and the splash pad got shut down. And the sadness amongst the youth in the community was palpable. And I'm wondering if we're, if we're being, I mean, the kids love it, but are we being, you know, fiddling while Rome burns to use that much water on a regular basis in the summertime?
I, I don't feel that way myself, and I, I'm very much in the water business. I look at that as a form of recreation for children. Okay, and you're going to spend that, if you're mowing the ball field, you're spending money. Okay, if you're fixing the playground, you're spending money. What, what you're doing there is you're, you're letting them splash in. Okay. If you're fixing the playground, you're spending money. What, what you're doing there is you're, you're letting them splash in the water. My kids loved to play in those things when they were younger.
Yeah. Okay. You reassured me. Thank you. Although maybe we'll find a way that we can regenerate that water, reuse the water as opposed to just letting it go into our system. There must be things that can do that. Counselor Ingham.
I had the similar question and then asking, can we recycle that water at all? But just to confirm, the last rate review was back in two thousand and nineteen. You said four, four years ago. Was that the last time we applied to the?
I think it was twenty eighteen. Yeah, you applied in eighteen. Your last rate adjustment was done. And yes. Your, your last rate change that you've experienced is April first, twenty twenty was the last time in.
Okay. Eighteen, you applied to the review board.
Normally we get three years out of any rate. Okay. So.
Thank you.
Also, okay. Thank you. Not necessarily a question, but comment. I'm reassured to see that we've kept our rates relatively low, given our, you know, our, our town is growing as well. And I'm happy to see it because I mean, it does keep us consistent in keeping up with the costs of our infrastructure. I like not having big jumps in people's bills as well. So that's a great thing. Not sure about recycling the water. That sounds kind of gross. But anyway, and at Remo though, they did, we did have a discussion on the splash pads, just total side note, that they were actually a really good way for, to keep people from overheating. So when they were sitting by and keeping their kids, adults maybe walk through it, it was, there's a lot of deaths happen through heated.
Just as a thought for you on the recycling, you can't recycle it back for drinking purposes because it's going to be contaminated, but you could recycle it into watering the lawn or the flower gardens with things like that.
But you meant recycle it and then walk through it again.
Yeah. Yeah, there's got to be other ways. Yeah. And just in comment to, to what we talked about in Remo yesterday, that it's not just the young kids that can use a splash pad. If we're really hot, then we can, you know, anybody can go in it. It's for all ages. There we go. There's my plug there.
Okay. Yes. Yes. All ages. Just get it in your mind. Get in your mind. All ages. I, I was talking to Megan, just Megan Swonberg, who strangely sits on both accessibility and source water. She has skills in both areas. Yesterday at accessibility, but I was asking her a source water question because I had just watched a very interesting documentary on Orange County. Alex, you'll find this impressive. Orange County, California, where they have a lot of people and very little water and they have a major recycling of their water that they purify. And then they eventually goes back into their aquifer. So it's just constantly. It's very impressive. Because they were running out of water. They don't have enough water. So now they do because it's just, you know, it's the cycle of, of water. Any other comments or bright questions like that? Comments?
I just, because I didn't mention this at the outset, that this rate study, like the last one was needed and we, we look at it and I just, the work of Alex in terms of identifying projects that we need to do in the future. And I think that was one of the keys that was fed into the rate study itself. So we're, what I would call a little bit more proactive, looking forward as opposed to just simply replacing infrastructure. So I just make that comment for the record.
Not seeing any other lights. So I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. That passes. We do not have an in camera. So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just remind counsel everything you do this week and until we meet again, try and think of how we could be more age friendly. Get it top of mind. I think it's important, age friendly. Whatever we're doing, that's, that's my new thing. That's our new thing. That's our new thing. Whatever we're doing in the town for the town, how can we, whether it's encouraging older adults to be in our splash pad or, you know, whatever. So thank you, everyone. A motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Ingham, all those in favor, and keep saying aye. Aye. Opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.